Okay, we have no questions about this evening's agenda. We will proceed with staff updates. And first up is the Pac Square Visioning Project update. With, I think DK Wesley and Mitch Silver are helping us with this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I believe Mitch is with us remotely. Hopefully he is. Alright, so good afternoon, Assistant County Manager DK Wesley. I'm here to just tee up your next update involving the Pac Square Visioning Project. With us remotely is Mitch Silver, who helped to coordinate and do this work. Also with us in person is Steph Monson Dahl from the City of Asheville, the Urban and Planning Design Director. And so before they come up and give you all the update, I just want to remind you all about the work that happened in 2020. As you all are aware, we collaborated with the Asheville City Council on the Vance Monument Task Force. They spent a little over 12 weeks determining, developing a recommendation for the city council on what to do with the Vance Monument. Their recommendation was presented to the city council and they voted to make the decision to remove the Vance Monument. So in the spirit of collaboration, we brought a recommendation for it to this board to participate in the visioning process for what that space will look like in the event that the monument was removed. And that was because during the process, the 12 weeks, we kept hearing during that process, if the Vance Monument is removed, what will replace it? What will that space look? There was a lot of history and background about the space and so the community kept asking those questions. In addition to that, they were asking questions about, you know, what, who will fund? What will the funding look like for replacing this area? So you all approved county staff to continue to work with the City of Asheville. In addition to that collaboration with the City of Asheville, you all provided $35,000 for the visioning project. That effort has completed and Mitch Silver McAdams will provide an update on that. Stephanie will also provide some additional information before Mitch joins us. We were also hearing, as I mentioned before, what the funding will look like. Because of that, we continue to keep our ears to the ground on external funding opportunities. Steph is gonna give you an update on the Mellon Foundation grant that the City of Asheville applied for and received. It's about $3 million and it's gonna start the work in the area. Before I call Steph up, I want to thank our county staff who participated in this effort. We had participation from Catherine Cutshaw from Special Collections and the Library. Also, our Cape team was very important in this work. That includes Lillian Govis, Zakiya, Bill Rogers, and Leonard Jones. When we talk about the grant, and Steph will share more about it, Rachel Nygard found that opportunity and she spent a whole lot of time staying connected to Mellon Foundation. They were inspired by the work that was happening in our community and asked us to apply. And so the City of Asheville, because of course it's their property, applied, were the lead applicant. And so we have some funding to start the work in that area. So I'll pass it over to Steph and she'll take it from here.
Thank you very much and thank you County Manager and County Board of Commissioners. I want to start off by underscoring something that she just said, which is that this project was made possible by county staff participation. It really elevated the project and we're hoping that moving forth, that we can continue that kind of collaboration. So next slide. I'm gonna start with the end in mind here and say that when we ask our community for input on items, Buncombe County staff and city staff. Am I using this? I'm the one that's doing it. Beautiful, thank you very much. Okay, so when we ask our members of the community, and this was a countywide project, for their input, and we get such a great response, it's significant, we have developed consensus on items. What we can do moving forward is use it, right? So part of that looks like recording that kind of input, putting into a plan. And in the city's case for this, this plan, we are looking at adopting it. So we're starting today with the review process, having you all consider this item and hear from Mitchell Silver, who was our project lead. We will be having a presentation in Asheville City Council next Tuesday. They won't be voting at that presentation, but there will be comments made by Chief Sneed of the Eastern Beyond the Cherokee Indians and other community members, as well as Mitchell's presentation. We'll be going to the Planning and Zoning Commission, kind of in a backward step, but that's just because they had to move their meeting and then adopting the plan, hopefully, at the end of the month. Because, you know, the big news is that starting in October, we have the start date of the Mellon Foundation Grant. And I just want to clarify that it's a $3 million grant and that it can be used in three ways. And it's not these priorities here, but the three ways it can be used are developing the planning and design refinement for any improvements in Pac Square Plaza proper, up top. That's the area around the former Vance Monument, but also includes other places that did not seem as welcoming and inclusive to our community. It can be used for a program we're calling Sharing Our Stories, which is a partnership with Buncombe County Special Collections, where we are going to catalyze their existing program of harvesting oral and video histories by pumping in new materials, resources, and additional staffing for two years. And then the third piece is community planning and design with the Block Collaborative. As they look to create what you'll hear about in this plan, it's called a cultural corridor. It's really improvements that help better identify them as a special and unique place in our community. So as we work with the Block Collaborative, the first thing that we are gonna do is hire a community facilitator. Also, by the end of the year, we plan on releasing that RFQ for designs for Pac Plaza. And then we'll be looking by March of 2024 to complete the program requirements and scoping for sharing our stories. And the big thing for the next three years is that we'll need additional funding through partners. And you can imagine who some of those are. Maybe the TDA, maybe Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, local state government, all of those types of things as we move forward in making those places more welcoming and inclusive. So I am now going to turn this over to Mitchell Silver. And Mitchell Silver, many of you may have met him. He's worked in our community before. He has a great background in both being the former Planning and Urban Design Director for the City of Raleigh for many years. But also, he was the New York City Parks Commissioner. And he's an honorable member of the American Society of Landscape Architects and was ahead of my profession. He was the head of the AICP or American Planning Association for a long time as well. So Mitch, are you with us? Give him a minute, see. I'm just gonna grab my phone in case he's texting me. While we're waiting on him, I'm gonna get started with a presentation in the essence of time-saving here. So when we set out and hired McAdams as our consultant for this project, we said that there were five purposes that we needed to address in this plan. And I think you've probably read through all these. So what I'll say to you is that they have been successfully addressed. We did go through all of the questions with the community and with the consultants and get through all of that. Don't know that this clicker is working anymore. Thanks. I'm never one to let a moment sit still. So I'll just tell you also what we're doing with the Block Collaborative while we're waiting and anticipate any questions here. So Block Collaborative is a group of about five to a dozen members who are business owners, institutional representatives of the block community right here, two blocks away. And they have been working together for the past couple years to determine, you know, what they would like to see in the future as far as re-knitting themselves back into Pac Square, but also the East End. And we are currently developing a memorandum of understanding with the block community. So that as we move forward with any of our work, it's very clear on the front end how the money will be used and what kind of authority and level of collaboration this group has. So that's a pretty exciting thing. And by the time we get to, City Council will be able to provide more information on that. And I see Mitchell is here.
I am here.
Great.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
And I think that someone else has control over the slides at this point. Is that right, Lillian? Oh, it did, it changed, okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Mitchell.
Okay. I'm ready when you are. I don't see the slides yet, though.
You can't see the slides, okay. Can you see the slides now, Mitchell?
Yeah, but it's, I think, probably on slide number six or seven.
Yeah, if we just go back. Okay, I do not have control. Someone else? Yes, keep going, yeah. Okay, Mitchell, we're gonna start right here from slide two, talking about engagement. We've already gone through the purpose of the plan. And I'll switch the slides for you.
Well, first, I just want to thank the city and the county for having the leadership and courage to issue an RFP to reimagine Pac Square Plaza to address past harm. Really, I worked under the guidance of the City of Asheville, our entire McAdams team. And we attained community consensus for a vision document that will serve as a guidebook to illustrate how the Vance Monument site, Pac Square Plaza, and the surrounding area could be redeveloped in the future to be more equitable and inclusive. The 10 ideas you're about to see were developed by listening to the community in order for the city and county to have an implementable guide for phasing improvements over time. The heart of this process was listening and public engagement. We had several listening sessions, focus groups, open houses. It was so important that we hear local voices so that we can co-create a vision for the future. And what you're seeing from the engagement summary are some of the themes that emerged from all of our conversations. And I can tell you, those stories were very powerful and it really influenced us to start to focus on and plan for the future. Next slide. So to cut to the chase, we developed 10 design ideas. And these design ideas are recommendations about how Pac Square Plaza and the surrounding area can transition in the future. Next slide. The first is that upon our analysis, we realized that Pac Square Plaza was object-centered, a monument, a fountain, benches, but it wasn't engaging. And so what we heard loud and clear is that the public wanted a central gathering place where they can come together of all races to get excited, to meet one another. And so our first recommendation is really to improve or create new spaces in the plaza for civic engagement and expression, storytelling, oral history, public art, really a central gathering place. You'll see on the left-hand side, we have an image about how the space could be envisioned. We certainly recognize this needs to be evolved in the future, but it's really transitioned it from a space that is full of objects to more that is people-centered. Next slide. One of the things that we've noticed is that people really express concern about navigating Broadway Street. So we wanted to take a look as we re-envisioned Pac Square Plaza, is how do we make that transition at entrance across the street a lot easier? So recommending one small intervention is to move a crosswalk where it's currently located a little bit further. Since now Pac Square, North Pac Square Street will be closed, this gives people a safer and more easier way of crossing the street to enter the new reimagined Pac Square Plaza. Next slide. Another design idea, we recognize that the decision about the Vance Monument is still being heard at the North Carolina Supreme Court. And so we have a couple of recommendations. If the court rules the monument needs to stay or it can go, the report includes some ideas about what do we do with this space should the court rule one way or the other? So the recommendations looked at both options so that the city would have options about what to do should the monument stay or the monument go. But I can tell you, a lot of people felt it was a very painful memory. And if it would go away, they don't want to be replaced with another monument. They want that entire space reimagined for more public and civic engagement uses. Next slide. One of the key recommendations, we're very pleased that the Biltmore Company is open to this idea, is that we recognize that the north side of the plaza was not active. It was filled with an office building and while it served a purpose at that time, we really felt that we had to redesign and activate the ground floor of the Biltmore Plaza, which really serves at that northern edge. Right now, it's elevated lawn with the building that's primarily concrete. And we've offered two ideas. One, you can literally punch into the ground floor and have a series of restaurants and gift shops, more retail activity to activate that edge. Or if there's a reluctance to break into the ground floor, there are these attractive kiosks that could be designed to really activate that edge with food, with all sorts of activities to really make sure this is now a people-centered space. Next slide, please. In terms of number five, if you look at the upper left-hand corner, there's another elevated lawn in front of the Biltmore Building. This is a city-owned property. Our recommendation is to take this space and create a meditation grove. We heard a lot of stories about harmful stories and memories that occur in Pac Square Plaza. And so we wanted to make sure that as those trees age out, we create this grove, this place where people can sit and enjoy themselves. And even at night, that there's a way to illuminate that space with stories about Asheville where people could tell the stories in a very creative way. Next slide, please. In terms of number six, this one is so key. We recognize that the street in front of the Biltmore Building, North Pac Square, should be closed to vehicular traffic and create that additional space and merge it in with the plaza itself to make it a lot more accessible. This is a key recommendation to increase the size of the space itself. And when the Biltmore Plaza ground floor is activated, that gives the space more place and space for people to enjoy themselves. This is not a critical street. We worked out how access could be made to the building. But our recommendation is to close off North Pac Square to vehicular traffic entirely and increase the size of the plaza. Next slide. In order to make South Plex Square work, we're recommending that College Street be converted from one-way to two-way. Currently, emergency vehicles travel on South Pac Square. This often interrupts some of the special events that happens. They need a personnel to make sure that that space is used for some special events and that the emergency vehicles can get through. Our recommendation is if you create a two-way street in College Street, now you can use South Pac Square for more activities. It would be a shared street, as you see in the upper image. Traffic, emergency vehicles, and deliveries can still use it, but it could be fairly easily closed off for special events now that you have a College Street where all the emergency vehicles can now be relocated from South Pac Square to College Street. Next slide, please. Now, there are a series of recommendations regarding South Marcus Street and the block. From the very beginning, we understood the importance of block played in Pac Square Plaza, but in downtown in general. And so a lot of attention was played to how do we connect the block, the East End, to Pac Square Plaza? So we have a series of recommendations about how to make that happen. We heard so many stories about the pain from urban renewal and other issues that affected this community. So we really paid careful attention to how do we now create that energy, that ethical development that connects the block to Pac Square Plaza? Recommendations, create a cultural corridor. And you'll see a series of recommendations about how that can be accomplished. Next slide. First, we are recommending that South Marcus Street be converted to a cultural corridor with proposed amenities. We also want to make sure that there are a number of open spaces that would start to connect, make this a cultural corridor. Right now, they're underused. If you look at Marcus Square Plaza today, it looks more like a parking lot than an active street. We really want to elevate its importance to establish a strong connection between Pac Square Plaza and the block. Next slide, please. As you can see from the images at the side, you're seeing the YMI building at the end of this picture, but you can't see it because it's basically covered up. So you'll see shortly that we're gonna come up with a series of recommendations of how can we start to change the aesthetics, the importance of this street by really redesigning it so that there's a strong connection between the Pac Square and the block itself. You're looking at some of the existing conditions on the right to show you how narrow the sidewalk is and how large the street is. And as we all know, it's currently being used for parking for the municipal building. Next slide. So we want to first have a creative gateway that people recognize that something special is happening down the block. The image you see was inspired by a woman who grew up right near the block. And that's just really inspired by her father, how he used to take her down the block and walk. And so this is gonna be, we're recommending an eight-to-10-foot sign right at the corner where you see the YMI Institute. That is a way of just showing that something's very special and they're greeting you as you enter South Marcus Street. Next slide. In terms of some quick wins, in the short term, while the plan is evolving, and we're very pleased that the grant will help facilitate some of these conversations, is that right now, you can temporarily put kiosks down Marcus Street with culturally sensitive amenities so that people can now shop from Pac Square to the block. We have planters that will make a safe zone for pedestrians and the vendors to be able to show some of their very creative merchandise and hopefully sell it. So this is a quick win that could occur right away by taking parking on one side of South Marcus Street while the emergency vehicles can continue having their way to get through the street. Next slide, please. We also mentioned in terms of some long-term recommendations. There are special treatments, you could add on facades. The deck is owned by a private owner, but we're recommending that the purse may be open to paying for what is called a flex facade. This is a fabric that could be applied to the parking deck. And you can use it to show some kind of culturally significant messaging and history along that parking deck as we make other long-term improvements to South Marcus Street. Long-term, we're hoping that the sidewalks will be wider on both sides. And on the west side, as you can see, similar to what you see in other parts of Asheville, that there'll be vendor kiosks permanently placed so now the entire personality of the street will change. Next slide. And then finally, there are a number of these private open spaces and one public that right now are underutilized. We believe we can work with some of the private owners and public owners to see if we can reposition some of these spaces to really add a lot more public spaces for activation for the block itself. Next slide. We also believe there's other opportunities for waifighting to the block. This was along Biltmore Avenue. On Eagle Street, there's another entrance where the block is one block away. And so we're recommending the possibility of murals being placed there. If you look on the left side, lower side, this is a local artist in Woodstock, Georgia, did a lot of storytelling about the history of the community. It's a very powerful message done by local artists and we're recommending that some of the local residents in the block work with some of the property owners to see whether this could be accomplished. We also noticed on Eagle Street that there is just columns with stores, but no one noticed that they're there. We looked at Biltmore Avenue and recognized there are these beautiful blade signs that advertise the retail establishments that are there. We're recommending that the property owner of these commercial establishments see whether they can provide blade signs. One, it'll add an attraction, but number two, it'll advertise exactly the stores that are there along Eagle Street. Next slide. A tough one, but it was loud and clear from the community. They would love to have the municipal building be an asset to the Pac Square area. They recognize the importance of the police and fire department, but they feel very strongly in the long-term to explore whether those uses can be relocated to another site. And then we could take the municipal building and make it be an asset to Pac Square Plaza by having what you see here where the fire trucks are loaded, to have an outdoor space with possibly restaurants or other retail-type uses. So it really now complements Pac Square Plaza and that the police and fire would have a more appropriate location where they can be located. Again, this is a long-term recommendation. Next slide. Very quickly, in terms of other considerations, we recognize that there are many elements that are located in the plaza today. And we are recommending that there be a very careful study to see those that need to be removed, relocated, or recaptured in the new Pac Square Plaza. You should do this by performing inventory audit of the memorials, the markers, and storytelling. I think we counted well over 200 or 300 throughout the entire Asheville downtown. But then the inventory will determine exactly how many there are and where they're located. We're also encouraged that the city participate in the process to create a municipal service district. The city was loud and clear. We need someone to help maintain, program, and manage Pac Square Plaza once it's completed. And we believe municipal service district is the right direction. And then finally, we strongly encourage that the city and other entities work with programmers to ensure that all programming is inclusive and equitable. And then finally, next slide. In the last chapter of the report, we provided that guidebook that the city was asking for with different phases of both Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3, as well as Phase 4. And within it is giving them clear direction about how they proceed over time to help reimagine and redevelop Pac Square Plaza. So that concludes my presentation. And now I'm available to take any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch, and Steph, and DK. We appreciate the presentation. And Commissioners, do any of you have questions or comments?
Maybe I'll start with a question. Can anyone give me the 30-second explanation of how there's a lawsuit surrounding taking down a monument that's already been taken down and what that means? What are we talking about?
Not sure there's a 30-second way of putting that one.
Okay.
I can just let you know that about 10 years ago, the city accepted a donation from a citizen group to help restore the monument. And so the lawsuit is whether or not that group that gave the money to the city has legal standing to determine whether or not it is able to be taken down at all. Right, so they donated money for it.
Anyone else? I'm curious, could you talk a little bit more about the municipal service district and just kind of share your ideas around that, please?
Well, currently my understanding is that the idea of municipal service district was attempted before and is now being attempted again. The city was very clear about its resources to manage, to maintain, and program Pac Square Plaza. There are two ways you go about that. Typically, there's a conservancy model and then there's a municipal service district model. We understood that those conversations were underway. And so we asked the city to participate in that process. Municipal Service District, I'm sure you all know how it operates, but the question is- is what are the boundaries? What will their focus be? But clearly, if you want Pac Square Plaza to be that exciting, dynamic place that it can be through programming and maintenance and minis, and management, that it's important that you do have an entity that has uh overseeing Pac Square Plaza as its role. There were different kind of municipal service districts. I'm familiar with some that actually do oversee downtown and program and some do not. So that was part of the conversation we recommended to the city. Please explore that because without that, you don't want to spend millions of dollars in the square and they don't have the dollars to maintain or program it. I think that's a high expectation and the public said the same. If you're going to build it, what about maintenance? And so we felt the municipal service district would be the best approach.
Thank you for that clarification. All right.
My co, comment is that I'm pleasantly surprised by the scope of this and, and I think it's great and exciting and I guess I perhaps naively wasn't expecting to kind of think about reimagining this large of an area in downtown. You know, I'd say further that I think I'm, I'm becoming increasingly convinced that one of the best things that could happen for the economy of downtown is for there to be more pedestrian priority streets. And so I guess I would just straight up plead with City Hall to reconsider their, their own recommendations from their own multimodal committee that recommended doing that a few years ago uh to revisit that. Um, but yeah, I just generally think this is, this is great stuff.
Okay, thank you all very much. We appreciate your time and all the effort that's been put into this.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I believe next up, we have water quality data and grant and that's Anne Marie Taylor and Jennifer Harrison.
Good afternoon commissioners and county manager. Uh, we're here to talk to you today about an exciting topic of water quality in Buncombe County. So um today we're going to give you an overview of kind of some of the data behind where we stand with water quality. And then we'll come back and talk about um your generous support of improving water quality through the Clean Water Fund. So um the, the kind of introduction to water quality, as we know, it's a, it's a challenging um topic. We are in the French Broad watershed and that is beyond Buncombe County. There's five counties that make up the French Broad watershed. And the French Broad flows into us from Haywick or excuse me, um Henderson County and flows into Madison County. So we both are a receiver and an exporter of um of all the wa, of, of water. And so what we're going to look at today is just um what are some of our measures that we take? What are the major impacts that we see in our waterways? And then we're going to talk about maybe some approaches to improving that. One thing that I want to note is that um sediment and erosion are our biggest contributors to impaired waters. Uh, oftentimes we talk about um fecal coliform, which comes in the form of septic, um can also come from livestock. But throughout North Carolina, the number one impaired um impairment to water quality is sediment and erosion. So um with that, I'd like to introduce Anne Marie. She's one of our partners at EQI, which is the Environmental Quality Institute. We have a contract with them to do um water quality monitoring at 16 sites in Buncombe County. And that pairs with a myriad of other partners that you'll see to be comprehensive in what we're me, measuring here. And that's also a compliment to the state and federal agencies that do water quality monitoring through um the Department of Water Resources and EPA. So without further ado, Anne Marie.
Hi guys. Um, so yes, I'm the director of the Environmental Quality Institute in Black Mountain, North Carolina. Um, and. So I'm going to get to the beginning of the presentation. So I'm basically going to show you dots on maps. All right. So we operate uh this program called the Volunteer Water Information Network. We call it VWIN. Um, and this is a program that's been going on since 1990 um throughout Western North Carolina. It's volunteer in that the samples are collected um on a broad geographic scale by volunteers, by trained volunteers. And then the samples are brought to our lab in Black Mountain where we test them uh using certified methods. We're certi, state certified. And our staff analyzes the samples. So we have eight different tests that we run every month on all the samples that we get. Turbidity and total suspended solids are our measures of sediment and erosion in the, in the watersheds. Orthophosphate, ammonia, and nitrates are our indicators of nutrient pollution. And pH alkalinity and conductivity are a few others that we test that are just common ecological metrics. The data uses um vary depending on our um partner organization that's using the data. Um, so it could be things like red flags for sudden water quality changes. Like if we see a sudden spike in nutrients and um in a Asheville stream, we'll get in touch with Metropolitan Sewage District and see if they can see if there's a sewer line break or something like that. It can identify bigger septic and sewer failures, uh supporting grant funding for restoration and conservation projects, uh which is a big one to try to bring money into the area to support improvements. It's, it helps to allocate resources for erosion control and stormwater runoff. Um, a lot of groups use it for outreach and education as well. And, and general community stewardship, um especially through volunteerism. And increasingly, this kind of collaborative um participatory science is being used by state and federal agencies what, as well. All right. So we monitor more than Buncombe County. Uh, this is a map of the, of where we monitor right now. So it goes, um, we have six different uh river basins that we monitor in 14 different mountain counties. And that's about 200 sites per month whose water samples come to our lab and get tested. We work with about 30 different partner organizations, um such as Buncombe County, other environmental nonprofits, local governments, community groups, local businesses, and interested individuals. Um, and the sites are chosen by our partner organizations because we don't really need the data just to collect data. We want it um to be used by watershed managers. And so you can see here is um just the map of all those different basins that we monitor in. This is um some of our Buncombe, uh of our partners who help us monitor in Buncombe County and just outside in um, in nearby watersheds. It includes Buncombe County, Soil and Water, Mountain Tree Riverlink, City of Asheville, Ivy River Partners, Mills River Partnership, New Belgium, Metropolitan Sewage District, the Pigeon River Fund of the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina. And then also some smaller uh community groups uh that have kind of a water body of interest in their neighborhoods, um as well as the volunteers that help collect our um samples. And so here is a map of our monitoring sites in Buncombe County and a few over the border. This is mainly focused on the French Broad River and the tributaries to the French Broad River. The ones that are included outside the borders are Mills River, which um it's a water supply for South Buncombe County. And uh it, and we're also including Cane Creek, which starts in Buncombe County near Fairview and then goes uh to Fletcher and Henderson County. And then we're also including sites up north in the Ivy River watershed. That's a large area that um is, there's a lot of collaborative work going on to improve water quality and it's also a water supply. So what you're going to see on the maps is water quality ratings and it goes from excellent to poor. Um, we, we take this data that we collect um and do calculations to determine um where it lays uh compared to all of our other sites. And so this is using data from 2020 to 2022, the past three years of data, which means 32 monthly samples per site uh for those eight different tests that we run. And it's, and so the dark blue is excellent, uh light blue is good, going down to poor being red. And I, I want to draw attention to a few, a couple of different areas um that I think are worth mentioning. As of the 2022 ratings, um all of the poor sites in Buncombe County are found in the Lester Sandy mush area. Um, and then what the northwest part of the county. Here we have a history of deforestation on very steep slopes, um high sediment, high nutrients, um and widespread erosion issues. And it just, it leads to uh troubled waterways just persistently. Another area I'd like to mention is urban Asheville. And so here we have a lot more um kind of average to below average site ratings. We have a lot of impervious surfaces, which means the water doesn't drain, it runs off, it's swift, it's, it's warm, it's um polluted with whatever was laying on that surface that it hit. And it, it leads to also erosion and runoff of this pollution. And so. That is something that is actively being dealt with, um all the stormwater issues in Asheville, but um it also has to do with aging infrastructure like sewer lines um uh and sewage leaks. We also have higher levels of things that are not necessarily a problem for water, but they are indicators of human contributions to the water quality. So it's kind of taking away some of those sites that are out, outlying, kind of headwater streams in the area. This is more of a map of, of the main tributaries coming into the French Broad River through Buncombe County and nearby. The best water quality sites are Bent Creek, Mills River, Big Ivy River. So Bent Creek's down in the south um of the county. Big Ivy is in the north um in Barnardsville. Um, and these, these sites are heavily forested, um don't have a lot of impervious surfaces and don't have a lot of agriculture. The worst water quality streams uh are the Newfoundland Creek, South Turkey Creek, and North Turkey Creek out in Lester um for the reasons I mentioned earlier. So as Jennifer was mentioning, sediment and erosion is absolutely um the biggest problem. This is a map of the French Broad River sites only. And so we've got two in Henderson County, five in Buncombe County, and one in Madison County. You can see coming up um out of Hendersonville, it's pretty average, but what is the main contributor is um sediment to that um lower water quality. Asheville, it actually improves and I think that that is because of better water from the Swananoa River coming in and diluting the French Broad River water. This is taken in, in the River Arts District. And I believe that the, the water also slows between the two sites and so some of that sediment is dropping out uh of the water column. So, you know, generally okay in Asheville. Hot, so if you keep going north, which is downstream, you'll see red, which is poor. And that is going to be because also of sediment, but um increasing nutrients, phosphorus, especially from the Metropolitan Sewage District, which is a permitted discharger and doing great work, honestly. And then from then on, you know, it's continues to be degraded after that. And you know, the French Broad River, as Jennifer was mentioning, it comes out of Hendersonville. Before that, it's Transylvania County. And it's not, we're not in an area like the Mississippi River, the Ohio River, where it's coming from states and states away from like uh an uncountable, seemingly uncountable amount of um square miles of, of land. This is something that we could work together regionally to improve. And in Buncombe County, uh something like 75% of our waterways are headwater streams. And so, you know, all these kind of smaller springs and, and, and smaller tributaries are really worth preserving um and um keeping our eye on so that they do not get further degraded. So kind of circling back about some of what I already mentioned, um these are examples of pollution uh in our waterways um here in Buncombe County. The top right is point source pollution. And so that's coming from a known location, like a single location, basically. It's things like um wastewater treatment plants, things that are permitted, permitted dischargers and illicit dischargers. It can come from, say, a landfill or, or, or things like that. This is the North Fork of the Swananoa River. It's running um kind of murky white in this photo. And I believe that has been dealt with um through DEQ. But it's an example of something that we see uh in, in what we're monitoring. Kind of circling clockwise, we see um issues like with human and livestock waste, septic failure, um sewage line breaks, uh wastewater treatment plant failures, um and livestock waste. And all these put the phosphorus, the nitrogen that limit biological growth, which is when they, when there's too much nitrogen and phosphorus, it can cause things like the harmful algel, algel blooms um that can be toxic. It can, it can cause um a lot of problems downstream, you know, the further downstream, the French Broad River is a water source, uh drinking water source. So things like this are really important. Um, it can also cause um bacterial problems. Circling around to um the more urban environment, we have um all the surfaces. We get things like excessive road salt. That's something we commonly see in the um, in the wintertime. And then just other sources of urban stormwater problems. And then the top left is Newfoundland Creek in Lester and it's just demonstrating, this is a photo that was taken of the water several days after a heavy rainstorm and it just takes a while for that um sediment to fall out and be pushed further downstream. And you don't have to take our word for it. The Department of Environmental Quality also tests, they do some testing in uh the area, um as much as they have resources for. And every two years, they, they um either add or drop sites from their, what's called the 303D listing for impaired waterways. And so these are sites in Buncombe, these are waterways in Buncombe County that are, have impairments as of 2022. Some of them are more recently added. And when I say recently added, some of it might just be because they were tested by DEQ for the first time. And that might be what made them go on the list for the first time, not that they're necessarily worse than they ever were. But what you're going to see in this list is some of the things I've already been talking about, um things like um Baycoat Branch, Town Branch, uh uh Smith Mill Creek, Ross Creek. These are urban waterways um here around Asheville. And then you have things like Hominy Creek, Newfoundland Creek, um Cane Creek uh that are working lands. And I'd like to say, um, I really appreciate, I, you know, I am not the person to say what projects are going to make huge improvements. There are a lot of more qualip, qualified people uh to comment on that than myself. But I'm really impressed with the work that Soil and Water does here in Buncombe County and the other um adjoining counties in terms of working with um farmers and landowners to provide technical support and tools and funding if necessary to make improvements on their land and to um facilitate um improved water quality by that kind of assistance. I really think that local, local solutions are needed for local uh water quality problems, especially in here, talking about how, like this is coming from our borders, you know, um this, this water. And so it's really doable if we wait for state and federal agencies to assist and, and um make progress. I don't, I think that it's going to be a lot longer. And I really appreciate you guys even listening to this and being here and making the decisions that you have to make. Because it really is, what I see is the local governments, local nonprofits, community groups, individuals making a difference in this region. individuals making a difference in this region. And Jennifer said I could put in a plug, since I am a nonprofit. Well, I run a nonprofit, I am not the nonprofit. But for one thing, I would say, so people here love the water. I mean, you guys know this. We put our kids in it, we put ourselves in it, we drink it when possible. And, and people want to get involved. And so I would recommend anybody who may be listening to this to get in touch with whatever nonprofit or local government is doing work near your community and, and just do what can be done. A lot of it is fun, you meet new people. For us at EQI, we have two programs. One is the chemical monitoring, where volunteers will go collect the water samples and they get delivered to the lab. The other is invertebrate monitoring, where we get to put on waders and take nets and go out and actually collect the, the invertebrates in the stream, which is super fun, and I highly recommend it. For the Vwin Chemical Monitoring, we have a site, we have sites in Cane Creek and Ashworth Creek and, and Fairview that need volunteers right now. And then for the invertebrate monitoring, we have a workshop coming up on September twenty-third. And it's going to be located at UNCA and the Big Ivy Community Center. And it's super fun, and I highly think everybody should come. If anybody needs any more information, you can visit our website at EQILab.org or contact us at EQILab, EQI@EQILab.org. And I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer, who knows more about the funding.
Thank you, Anne Marie. One thing I wasn't prepared to say, but since you generously gave a plug for Soil and Water, I wanted to also note our gratitude for the budget for supporting the cost share program. So this year, we have forty-three, forty-two thousand dollars to assist landowners with implementing projects to get them to a seventy-five percent cost share, a true seventy-five percent cost share. So all of these things together help us make improvements on water quality. So, the Clean Water Fund. So a quick recap, the whole idea here is that we improve water quality in Buncombe County. The funding that was allocated generously was a hundred thousand dollars. And the way we envision this grant working is one to three projects. So thirty to a hundred thousand dollars allocated this year. And I'll walk you through the timeline in a minute. The one thing that I want to note is the emphasis for this is construction. It is implementing projects on the ground. Projects that are looking, that are interested in either creating a new plan and/or doing some more water quality monitoring, as you just saw from Anne Marie. We have a lot of monitoring, we have a lot of data. We're interested in using that data. And so this Clean Water Fund is aimed at doing that, at actually putting projects on the ground. So you can see here the eligibility, nonprofits, government agencies, COGS. Of course, it needs to be within Buncombe County. Although, as we know, we're accepting water from other counties and giving counties other water. But we want the projects to actually be on the ground in Buncombe County. A key to the, to the application is that you must be within a area that has a watershed management plan. And the reason for that is those are projects that have already been scoped. We clearly know the impairment, we know what is needed in terms of the impairment. There's lots of ways to address problems, but we know what we're actually looking to achieve. And some thought has already been put into that. So we need a watershed management plan. And then, of course, we are looking to leverage money that's already out there. And given that we're working with other government agencies, nonprofits, we're hoping that there'll be other grants and, and money allocated to help leverage these projects. Even though thirty to a hundred thousand dollars sounds like a lot, sometimes these water quality projects can get, can get pricey. So I wanted to, yeah, there we are. So we wanted to give you this data in maybe a, a more interesting way to look at it. So you can see that each of your commission districts are outlined in the yellow, blue, and green. And you can see that all of your districts have a watershed management plan in them. And so starting in the northeast, we have the Ivy. Moving east, southeast, we have the Swananoa. Then we have Hominy Creek. And then we finish in central Asheville with the Central Asheville Watershed and then the Smithwell Creek Watershed Plan. So those are the target areas for this first round of funding. I will note that what we just heard in some of our water quality challenges is that need to work on, need to work on a plan perhaps in, in, in Newfound, Leicester. And there is currently a lot of work happening in Cane Creek for a watershed action plan that just hasn't been finished yet. So that's coming. Timeline, so the, the application opened on the first. We'll give time for people to contact me with questions and to provide written questions. And then we'll close the application on October second. We'll then get to work evaluating the, all of the applications that we receive. And at the October twentieth meeting of the Energy and Environment Subcommittee, we will bring those reviews to the team to take a look at. And then the, the November seventh board meeting, they will bring their recommendations forward for which projects they think are best for funding. Once that decision is made, we'll get to work in November contracting with everyone so that we can start projects in December. So water quality projects can take some time, particularly if there's some significant permitting. So while it would be ideal to be able to complete this all in one fiscal year, we're getting a late start. So we are, this, this round will be through June of 2025. So we'll carry this into next fiscal year. Should this pilot be highly successful and we decide that, you decide that the, the Clean Water Fund is a worthwhile project, we can look at what that timeline looks like going forward. But for this one, we'll have until the June twenty twenty-five. So that's what I have for you. Welcome, welcome any questions, and thanks for your time today.
Thank you, Jennifer and Anne Marie. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
And so I'll just say, Jen, did you? I just want to say, so Buncombe County Soil and Water has been doing great work in this area for several years. And I feel that this, these strategic projects that we're going to be doing really help us up our game in improving water quality in Buncombe County. So I appreciate the great work that's being done.
Thank you.
And let's see here, I think next is our quarterly Hayek update, Lacey.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Lacey, and I am the Homelessness Program Manager. I am excited to be here today to give you an update on recent work completed by the Homelessness Initiative Advisory Committee, or Hayek. I'm going to review some of the progress that they have made within the last quarter. And I'm also going to update you on the work of the workgroups. In, in particular, the Shelter Work Group, which has completed the process for their shelter expansion project. So first, I want to just talk about some notable actions that Hayek has taken in their continued efforts to refine policies and processes for our Continuum of Care, or our COC. At their August tenth meeting, Hayek approved an addendum to the North Carolina HMIS Privacy and Security Policy. This allows for the adoption of updated guidelines to ensure adequate sharing and protection of information for individuals that are receiving services. HMIS stands for Homeless Management Information System, and it is used to collect client-level data and data on the provision of services in our COC. So this addendum allows for individuals receiving services to provide information to a single HMIS participating agency within our COC and for that information to be securely viewed by other agencies in the COC who are also participating in HMIS. And this addendum also provides clear guidelines about how and when to share information within HMIS with non-HMIS participating agencies. And it clarifies for the individuals who are agreeing to data sharing that all the agencies have signed an agreement to follow HMIS privacy and security guidelines. Earlier in the summer at their July meeting, the Hayek approved a policy addendum to the Coordinated Entry Interim Policy. And this came after a review of current policies and procedures for prioritization determined that the policy did not properly account for the needs of people who are fleeing domestic violence. So previously, the prioritization was by length of time homeless and vulnerability as measured by the VI SPIDAT Assessment Tool. However, by the nature of their situation, people fleeing domestic violence often have minimal length of time homeless. And their vulnerability is better measured by another assessment that is evidence-based called the Danger Assessment. So this addendum refines our COC's policies such that people fleeing domestic violence are prioritized for placement into rapid rehousing programs based on their danger assessment score first, rather than length of time homeless or other vulnerability measures that are captured in the VI SPIDAT. And I also want to briefly mention that Hayek has made recommendations for our COC's ESG Funds Allocation for Fiscal Year Twenty-four. ESG, or the Emergency Solutions Grant, is a federal fund supporting street outreach, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention services, and rapid rehousing support. These funds are administered through North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and our COC applies for the funds yearly. So this year, the total ESG funding available for our COC is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and four dollars. And at their August tenth meeting, Hayek approved submission of funding requests for homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing for both Helpmate and Homeward Bound, as well as funding for emergency shelter services for Helpmate and the Salvation Army of Buncombe County. So you can see here, Helpmate will be applying for around forty-six thousand dollars for emergency shelter and homelessness prevention. Homeward Bound is going to apply for sixty-five thousand dollars for rapid rehousing and homelessness prevention. And the Salvation Army will be applying for around sixteen thousand dollars for their emergency shelter. I want to briefly review the progress made by Hayek workgroups. So Hayek initiated these workgroups to begin addressing the short-term tasks that were identified in the Within Reach Study that was conducted by the National Alliance to End Homelessness. And the workgroups have met regularly to work on the following tasks. The Governance Work Group was tasked with drafting a new Continuum of Care Charter for our COC. They completed reviews of other community charters. They've compared and contrasted board, committee, and workgroup structures of peer communities. And they have written a draft of a new charter for our COC that they anticipate presenting at Hayek's upcoming meeting on September twelfth. The Outreach and Encampments Work Group was tasked with drafting a comprehensive encampment resolution policy, as well as coming up with a plan for street outreach collaboration. They've reviewed example encampment responses, example policies from other communities, and they divided into teams to draft the sections of the policy. They are going to be presenting at Hayek's September meeting a draft of policy recommendations. I think their, their work is ongoing. There's lots of, lots of moving parts involved in comprehensive encampment resolution. And they are still trying to figure out exactly where they stand on some things. So they will be presenting policy recommendations. And they are going to continue working on the draft of the policy itself, as well as working on the draft of the Street Outreach Collaboration Plan. The Coordinated Entry Work Group has been working on updates to the coordinated entry process. So they are currently working on refining prioritization processes for housing interventions that are offered in our COC. And they're developing a plan for a centralized coordinated entry system for our COC. They anticipate that they will present a draft of this plan for centralized access at the September meeting. And then last but not least, the Shelter Work Group was tasked with formulating a strategy to increase shelter bed capacity by identifying shelter expansion opportunities. They've presented a plan for shelter expansion, which I'm going to tell you more about. And they presented it to Hayek at their July twenty-seventh meeting. And this expansion plan was unanimously approved by Hayek. So, and before I continue, I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Beech Ferrara and County Staff Jake Eckberg and Rachel Nygaard for their participation in the Shelter Work Group. So this workgroup was responsible for addressing the National Alliance's recommendations regarding shelter expansion. And that recommendation was that our communities seek to increase shelter bed capacity by thirty percent, or ninety-five beds. So that includes sixty single beds, that's beds that serve individual adults in a shared setting, twenty-five enhanced beds, those are not treatment beds, but they are beds that include onsite access to behavioral health, medical care, and substance use disorder treatment for individuals that want them. And they also recommended that we add ten family beds, serving households of any configuration, including couples without children, people that identify as LGBTQ+, two-parent households, mothers with teen boys, fathers with children, et cetera. So the Shelter Work Group toured local facilities to understand operations and identify latent capacity within existing shelters. They also conducted interviews of shelters that were identified as having best practices by the National Alliance. And they did that so that they could have some assistance in developing a scoring process for a request for partnership. They released a request for interest to identify potential community partners who are, were interested in collaborating with the group on a shelter expansion. And they received seven letters of interest in response to the, the request for interest. Of those seven, three entities were encouraged to apply for the request for partnership. Once that request for partnership was created and published, three proposals were received from Haywood Street Respite, Safe Shelter, and the Salvation Army. The three proposals were then scored by the workgroup and brought before Hayek. And Hayek approved the workgroup's recommendation to request funding for all three proposals, up to the amount of one point seven five million, pending final budget negotiations. And again, that motion passed unanimously at their July twenty-seventh meeting. The workgroup has since negotiated final budgets and finalized the request for one point seven five million for fifteen months of expanded shelter capacity between the three identified applicants. And so a little bit about the applicants and their programs. First, we have Haywood Street Respite. Haywood Street Respite provides temporary shelter for unhoused individuals who have recently experienced an acute health event and are too vulnerable to recover on the streets, but not sick enough to require ongoing hospitalization. Their onsite services include substance use disorder screening, behavioral healthcare and recovery services, linkage to primary medical care, healthcare advocacy, and system navigation support, housing search and placement assistance, transportation, and referral for other needed services as appropriate. So as part of this shelter expansion project, Haywood Street Respite is offering three beds, which are actually part of a broader expansion that's going to be coming online at Haywood Street in the coming months. And these beds are considered to be enhanced because they offer onsite access to medical, behavioral health, and substance use treatment to those who want them. Next, we have Safe Shelter, which is a collaboration between Trinity United Methodist Church, Grace Episcopal Church, Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church, and Counterflow LLC. And Grace Episcopal is going to serve as the fiscal entity and employer. Safe Shelter staff are trained in creating a sense of safety for those who have historically avoided shelter or who have been underserved due to concerns about safety. So, such as the BIPOC community, the LGBTQ+ community, and families with children. The shelter location will rotate monthly between the three churches. And these locations are going to be offering multiple small rooms for, for the shelter, which makes it possible for the shelter to offer non-congregate care to residents and keep the number of guests in a single room pretty low. Safe Shelter allows, will allow eligible guests to enter regardless of ID, vaccination status, or sobriety. Their staff will be available twenty-four seven to quickly accommodate entry and exit and to work on the spot with first responders. They are able to accommodate families with minor children and various compositions. And they have experience working with the LGBTQ+ population and other marginalized communities. So as part of this expansion project, they will have twenty beds total, ten family beds, and ten single beds. 10 single beds. The third applicant, the Salvation Army, is a longstanding community partner, providing shelter and four meals daily to individuals that receive their services. They are offering 20 new beds as part of this expansion project, in addition to asking for some assistance with sustainment of the 45 existing beds that they currently have in operation. They have demonstrated the ability to follow National Alliance recommended best practices within the last year. They don't require IDs for services. They allow pets, and they are allowing people to enter the shelter when intoxicated, as long as they agree not to use while they're on the premises. And their facility is open 24 hours a day for individuals and families receiving services. The Salvation Army is very eager to collaborate as part of this project. They have been heavily reliant on COVID funding in the past several years, and that COVID funding is now coming to an end, and they're facing the threat of the closure of their facility. And that would mean a loss to our community of those 45 beds currently in operation. As part of our COC's ESG application, I mentioned that they are going to be applying for $16,000 in annual ESG funding, but this funding combined with diminishing fundraising returns is not going to be enough to sustain the facility on its own. You can see that we've broken down the total cost for each project here for you into capital and operating costs, and that's just to demonstrate that there are some activation expenses for these expansion projects that we know won't be needed long term. The total for all three proposals comes to $1.5 million for 43 new beds and sustainment of 45 existing beds. And the budgets here, seen here, support expansion from October 1st, 2023, through September 30th, 2024. I mentioned earlier that Hayek has unanimously voted in favor of this expansion project, recommending $1.75 million to fund the three proposals. So Hayek is anticipating that the additional $228,000 that is being requested beyond the proposal budgets would allow the lead agency, which is the city of Asheville, to negotiate preservation and expansion of capacity through December of 2024. Hayek is also recommending that a shelter planning task force be convened by October 16th with the goal of beginning planning for a new permanent shelter, ideally co-located with other essential services. So as a review, we've included a comparison of the proposal response against the National Alliance recommended bed expansion. So you can see that these proposals give us a pretty good starting point to meet the recommendation for additional shelter beds, but there is a balance of need of 52 beds still needed immediately in our community to meet that goal. And if you keep in mind that the shelter expansion project does have an end date, and it's not going to result in additional beds being added in the community permanently, there's really good opportunity here to continue to address the National Alliance goal in a more permanent way. The Strategic Partnerships Team will be presenting funding consideration for $875,000 to support this shelter expansion project as part of their ARPA FRF Agenda Review item for you all later this afternoon. And I will be back to present the next quarterly update for Hayek in December. And in the meantime, I am here and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Stacy. I mean, Lacey. Any questions from commissioners? I have one or two questions. So on the enhanced, can you tell us more about, it seemed like that was an area we struggled with getting more beds for the enhanced? Can you speak more to that?
Well, I think generally, the shelters that are currently in operation here are figuring out new ways every day to collaborate with providers in the community for medical and behavioral health and substance use treatment, but I don't think that they all have those options readily available onsite, whereas Haywood Street has those options available onsite, which is why those beds are considered enhanced.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question, oh, looking at the operating cost, the Salvation, comparing the Salvation Army and then the one with the churches, the rotating shelter, there's quite a difference there in operating cost per bed, about double. Can you speak some to that differentiation?
Yeah, I may ask for some support from the team to answer that question.
So there are a number of details, obviously, that go into any kind of operating proposal. And the way that this outreach was conducted and the process was undertaken was to ask providers in the community what their costs would be for operating. Salvation Army obviously has some carrying costs in terms of operating on their existing site. This is a collaborative effort from the other provider in terms of a moving shelter location, so there's a lack of permanence in the sheltering. It's just different operating models, also the hours in which they operate, 24-hour operations versus more limited hours of operations. There are certainly nuances and details that we could share about how each differ, but we do recognize that each proposer had kind of their own cost assessments built in. And that is a point for, just to recognize that the Shelter Workgroup did go back and negotiate pricing and discuss price points in terms of the services that they were going to be able to access at each shelter, recognizing there is certainly variability in costs from one provider to the other.
Okay, thank you both. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now Eric will speak to us about the Public Safety Program Agreement update.
Hello, commissioners. Nice to see you today. So yes, I'm here to talk about the Public Safety Interoperability Partnership. You may be asking why the IT person's talking about that, because this really is about technology. So we'll get right into it. So the history of IT and collaborative public safety. So this all kind of starts back to 2002. There's an original CEGIS agreement. CEGIS stands for Criminal Justice Information Systems, but it was a whole lot more than just CEGIS data we were talking about. We were talking about FIRE and EMS and public safety in general. So it was kind of misnamed at the time, but honestly, there was a lot of positives that came out of that agreement. So you know, county IT has been supporting APD, AFR, a couple of other police departments, and some county fire folk since 2002 in various capacities. That agreement, though, did have some issues. Well, I should say, it also provided the framework for our CDE, or Essential Data Entry Folk, that's master name records and that intake process as well. But this agreement did have some cons, didn't have a good governance model for decision-making. The cost model was not very transparent or equitable. Again, 2002, I think it was cutting edge, but we outplayed this agreement a little bit. Didn't have a good way for other counties, other agencies to join that model with that static cost agreement and not, the last one here, not really having strong service level agreements. What was the county IT's role and responsibility, or agencies' roles and responsibilities to receive service? And so with that, we started this project right around the start of COVID. It's been a, you know, that kind of put a little bit of a break on it for a year or so, but it's been a lot of work between the agencies, myself, agency leaderships, county management, finance folk, all coming to the table, working together. What is this model going to be that's going to carry us into the future around sharing data, sharing software systems, et cetera? So what are we trying to accomplish here? Well, the goal of this agreement really is to leverage a single set of technology, and that ultimately will improve public safety operations. We believe and that the initial and recurring costs are reduced when we share the system and support thereof it. But that being said, we have to have formal agreements in place to understand roles, responsibilities, expectations, et cetera. So what do we have today? We're going to come to you with an agreement here in the not-too-distant future. It's between the county and all the different agencies. Out of that, it's an interlocal agreement with some service level agreements as well about what that support model looks like. It represents the current environment, for sure. I mentioned we didn't have a way to get agencies onboarded, but we've gotten Black Mountain and Weaverville onboarded now into our environment. Woodfin's been around for a little bit, so those agencies are now part of this model. We're looking really for all future public safety agencies. We don't have them all today. We'll see here on the next slide some of our other ones like Montrite and University Law Agencies. They're not quite here today, but we think we have a model to get them onto if they want to be. We have this new thing called the PEC, the Public Safety Interoperability Partnership Executive Committee. Acronyms inside of acronyms, it's true. And then most important for me, honestly, we have service level agreements now, right? What are we supporting, at what cost, at what service level, et cetera? So who are these players? I've already mentioned a lot of them. So of course, the city of Asheville PD and our sheriff's office are two biggest law enforcement agencies, but Black Mountain, Weaverville, Woodfin are also part of this collaboration. Of course, we have lots of county departments that exist in the public safety sphere, EMS, of course, our 911 center, pretrial, and I mentioned CDE already as well. All fire departments are part of this. That's awesome. And then I mentioned the PEC again, that the executive committee, and it's really representation from each of those agencies, plus myself, plus the city of Asheville IT Director is another technology voice in the room. We do have intentions of bringing on two community members into this group as well in 2025. And then you also see some representation, not all 18 fire chiefs, but Dennis Fagnant, Chief Fagnant, is the president this year of the association, so he's the representative. And then the other law enforcement agencies voted internally who'd be their representative. But the PEC meetings are open for all agency leaderships to come. We have good discussion. We're building a multi-year technology roadmap of where we want to be. We talk about policies. We talk about procedures. We talk about data sharing. We talk about security and all those meetings. And while this agreement is about to come forth to you guys, we've been walking the walk for a better part of the year now. About last fall, we started, this group started meeting on a regular cycle. There's been a lot of effort of these groups to come together. This is needed for the larger community, so we have good buy-in. What are we doing here in IT, right? So we don't support everyone's laptops or their printers and things like that. What we do do is we support these critical key systems. I've got four of them listed here, right? So the first one is computer aided dispatch. This is our 911 system, right? As phone calls come in, we know, you know you have consolidated PSAP, right? They get that information. They see the situational awareness. They have protocols that they follow, and they do that dispatch to all these agencies that are at scope here. Likewise, that 911 information gets pushed out to the vehicles and the responders themselves. These are these MCTs, mobile CAD terminals. So those are like in-vehicle systems that we support. The RMS system, this is the law records management system, so these are your arrest data, your warrants, your, everything from inventory of guns and vehicles and things like that. And then we support the jail as well for the sheriff. So those are the big core applications that we support. That's the data sharing and interoperability of response. The integrations and interfaces is another big, this crazy-looking spider web that you see on the screen. Those big circles in the middle are those core systems, but we send data to all other kinds of systems, background checks, accident submission reports, over and over and over. Lots of data moves to a lot of different places, and that helps with that interoperability. Then, of course, we support the infrastructure that all these systems live on. Our CISO is involved in this to make sure, we're talking about CGI data and other kinds of, sorry, Chief Information Security Officer is part of this group to support criminal justice information, right? Background checks. We have FBI data, SBI data. Do I need those acronyms spelled out? And of course, we do the business administration as well, right? Financing. In fact, another big part of the business thing is this next slide. We got notified a couple of years ago that our main vendor that supports these systems has gotten bought out. In fact, it was originally called OSSI, got bought out by Sun Guard, got bought out by Superiorion, now it's bought out by Central Squared. It's a 15-year-old system. It's end of life. So this is going to be a big multi-year effort. This PEC group is kicking this thing off. We are meeting with consultants to help us navigate this roadmap. We have a capital placeholder already out there today, but we'll be working this year to finalize that capital budget. We're going to be starting to demo new systems. CAD is the priority, our 911 center. Y'all know what's going on there, and we think some technology is going to help also with some of the efficiencies of that group. So you see, it's going to be a three-to-five-year, you know, project to change all these systems out, but this formal agreement of this interlocal agreement between these agencies is setting that, you know, formal process of decision-making, collaboration, financial picture of this multi-year effort coming up. So what are our next steps? I know the city of Asheville Council has already approved theirs. They did late August. I think the other municipalities are on their way and getting those done, so we're going to be presenting you those agreements here in the next, either next meeting or the one after that. We're going to continue our piece of governance meetings that we have, and we're going to drive this core systems migration project. And I think that's it. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Eric. Commissioners, any questions?
I do have one question, but I first want to commend you and the IT staff and the rest of county staff for making this happen. I think this has been in conversation long before I sat on this dais, but it was one of the first fire chiefs' meetings I attended as a commissioner. This was on the agenda. I vividly remember sitting with Vance and that being the topic of conversation in early 2019. So thank you all for your hard work for getting us to this point with an interlocal agreement. My question is, what does the cost look like? Or is that something that will come later?
Oh, I can share a little bit. I don't have the exact numbers. The whole cost of the program, I want to say, is about $1.2 million. Is that right? Yeah. That's a ballpark number. Yeah, about that, and that's roughly equal between staffing and licensing.
Oh, so thanks for your hard work on this. I know going across this many departments, people don't see how important it is for these systems to be integrated, but when you're looking at pretrial, when you're looking across fire departments, even our response, we're having conversations about what folks are going to show up to the right call, and that all is integrated into what you're doing here. So I'm thankful for that and look forward to seeing a final proposal on that one.
Question for you, Eric. And this is coming from a point of ignorance on my end. I assume what's built into the core system migration project is in choosing that vendor, we're actually choosing who will protect us from cyber threats and that sort of thing? That's like built into the...
Yes and no. Every system is going to have its security profile, right? And we have, you know, a security team on staff that will evaluate the vendor's proposal. We're ultimately responsible for securing our own borders, though, right? And making sure everything from user training, it all starts with end users, right? To making sure we've got the right policies and protections in place. So it's a, I mean, I like to say, security is everybody's job, but we do have a team here that really does focus on that and working in conjunction with the vendor space and their security teams.
Thank you, Eric, and to the whole team that worked on this. We really appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
And next up, Vance Bell with the tower utilization contract.
I hope you guys are all doing well. Bless you. I'll wait for that to come up. There we go. So if you'll indulge me just a second, I want to give you a little context for this contract that we're talking about. So pre-COVID, Tim and I met with, we've been working with Lena Sky on several different initiatives to expand broadband in and around the county. And we, at the time, we met with a gentleman named Lynn Forkes, who runs a company called Milestone, and they do tower management, but they also specialize in helping utilizing those tower resources to build out infrastructure in and around other places in counties and jurisdictions, things like that. COVID happened, kind of got put on the back burner a little bit. We had other things to worry about at that point. But then we circled back up with Lynn and talked to him a little bit. And we put out a RFP last fall. We had two respondents. One was Milestone, and we chose to go with Milestone. They seemed to be the best fit for us. So just want to give you a little context of what this is really all about while we're here today. So let's see if I can find the right button. There we go. So the goal here is to, is threefold. First, they are going to manage our existing tower sites. I have a slide here in just a minute that kind of breaks out our existing tower sites. They're going to manage those tower sites, leases, the payments, everything, and then they will basically cut us that monthly check or annual check, whatever it boils it down to in the lease agreement.
Secondly, they will market tower sites to third-party service providers like Verizon, AT&amp;T, people like that, that are looking to expand their coverage in the areas. They are, they're eagerly awaiting the execution of this contract. Let's put it that way. They have said that they have people really interested in in starting to get some work done on this. There is some revenue generation associated with this, and I have a have a number here. I'll share with you in just a minute. Again, as I said, there's expansion of fiber. As Verizon and AT&amp;T look to go out in the to the tower sites, obviously, they they have to build the infrastructure out. If they're running fiber, that provides these other entities to potentially provide broadband services to underserved areas or unserved areas. And also to increase the service providers' coverage. That's also a benefit. They will also look at all of our county-owned properties for potential of construction of new tower sites to see if those would fit and help in and around the wireless communication needs for the county. Okay, this is a, this is a, there's a lot of stuff here on the slide here. I want to labor Milestones experience here. But you can see they have quite a, quite a portfolio here. One of the institutions that they have partnered with is New Hanover. And they they've done a really good job there. I got nothing but positive feedback from the folks that are working with them at New Hanover. Talked to several different entities that they've worked with and they've all been glowing reviews, so. So this will be a five-year contract with three five-year extensions. Know what? We pay nothing. Basically, they, the way they make money is they generate funds by getting more people to get on our towers and they get a percentage of that. And this is how that breaks out. So for existing towers, they're basically going to manage our existing towers for 10%. That's roughly what they, they get 10%, we get 90% for existing towers, existing carriers on those towers. For existing towers and new contracts, if they bring on somebody new to one of our towers that we already have, we get 75, they get 25. If they determine that it would be great for us to build a tower at Lake Julian, I'm just throwing that out there as an example. And they they provide all of the upfront capital. They construct the tower. They they take care of all of that. And basically, they lease the land from us. For that, we get 40% of any revenue that's generated from that tower and they get 60%. Revenue projection, a big shout out to Matt Baker and James Shelton for this with strategy and innovation. They helped helped us derive this, but conservatively, 14 million, a little less conservatively, 21 million over the next 21 years is what we're looking at potentially generating based on how many towers they they erect and how many carriers they get to co-locate. Currently, the county has 17 tower sites. Seven, we own outright, and that means we own the tower and the property. Four, we own the tower, but we lease the property. And there's six where we're just a tenant, just like anybody else. And there's, like I said, there's potential for them to build new tower sites. And again, they put up all of the funding for that. Next steps, we're doing the first one here, briefing. And then hopefully, we can execute that that agreement, communicate with the the tower stakeholders. And we currently have several things in the hopper awaiting this execution. For example, Broad River out in Garren Creek, that that general area. Verizon is, they're standing by to execute on the contract there, run fiber up that, up the road up that way. And I've been giving them the Heisman a bit because I want to, I want to get get us to execute this. I feel like Milestone will do a really, really good job of making sure we maximize revenue generation. And not that that's what this is all about, but to be fair, they deal with carriers every single day. They know what market rates are, things like that, if it's if it's an acceptable market rate. So they're going to put put us in a better position to be successful around that. And again, we will manage the Milestone Partnership in IT. And I think that was the last slide. Any questions that I can ask, answer for you folks?
Thank you, Vance. Any questions, Commissioners?
I've got one.
I have two.
Okay.
So I I travel a good bit for my day job and I can't help but think when I come home that we have uniquely bad cell service and cell coverage. I don't have any evidence for that. I don't know if that's true, but is this going to improve our communities? Could it improve our our community's coverage?
Absolutely. Long-term, it certainly could. Absolutely. That's the, that's the goal here is to put up facilities or research county-owned properties that might be suitable for for good facilities to enhance coverage and then to market that to those providers. I'm not sure who you currently use, but you know, there's definitely several providers having issues in our area.
I've got a county Verizon and a personal AT&amp;T and they both have similar experiences.
Okay. Yeah, I, we are getting ready to do a a drive study, actually. And this is centered, this is not really related to this topic, but we are, we're partnering with Waste Pro and we're going to put some devices in each of their trucks. Think about it, garbage trucks go everywhere in the county, right? And we're going to be collecting data on four different carriers, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, US Sailor, bandwidth, signal strength, throughput, all that stuff. And then we will come back, analyze that data and determine the best carrier to go with for our public safety vehicles and for our cell services, things like that. The city has already completed that. We worked with them a little bit on that. There were no definitive winners from their perspective, but I'm hoping we get a little bit more clear-cut winner from from our analysis. So short answer to your question, yes, long-term, that should be an improvement in overall county sailor coverage by doing this.
No question that I have. A pet peeve of mine is with the these cell companies and all, they don't have the lines now as they go away. They don't have the maintenance that we had in the old days. But it's great to talk about what we're going to make. But my concern is, how do we control the costs more over a longer period of time? My concern is, you know, why don't we open it up where it's more competitive? Why do we have to have one carrier in one area? Why couldn't I go with the cheapest carrier for me? You know, that's a concern I've always had. You know, they have really a monopoly in the areas. And it's a big difference in the cost in the county. If you live in sandy mush or some areas of Broad River, you know, they're paying a whole lot more and the service is lousy. Well, how do we, you know?
And you're talking about from the consumer perspective. I'm assuming you're talking about from the consumer perspective.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's a really good question and it's definitely something we could bring up with the provider context that we have. And we could look to put together a discussion around that. I'd definitely be willing to take that back.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And Vance, just to clarify, what you all are doing on these towers, it will be open competitively to different providers?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just want to say thank you so much for this.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm excited. This has been a long time coming and I feel like there's, this infrastructure is going to be very important for our community.
Totally agree. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. Let's see, was there anything else, Commissioners, that we need to discuss or county manager for the briefing? Okay. I think it's is after the meeting, right? Okay. All right. Well, thank you all. We'll be back at 5:00.